We will call the meeting to order if you'll all please rise, then vacation by Supervisor Watson and the pledge of allegiance by Supervisor Moss.
Before I give the prayer this morning, I'd like to let the entire community know about the heroism that occurred in Golden Valley a couple of weeks ago. Three people risked their lives to pull a lady out of a burning trailer, and this type of heroism oftentimes go unhealed. I wanted to make sure that we were able to identify those gentlemen and thank them for their heroism. Their names are Paul Besonnet Jr., Robert Davies, and our chief, Tom O'Donohue. A very reverent thank you from all of us to you people that have risked your lives. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we welcome the new members to our board and ask that you guide them in the decisions that we make today. May we realize that our actions have an effect on the future of the citizens of all of Mojave County. We pray for peace within ourselves and throughout the world. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to call for executive session to be held on January 7th, 2013 at 9:00 AM?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Have a public hearing, I will open the first one. Discussion possible action, consider one dollar per printed form fee for forms provided as a courtesy by the, to the public by the recorder's office. I do have one person signed up on this. Mr. Roy Hagelmeier.
Good morning Chairman Johnson, Supervisors Moss, Brotherton, Angus, and Watson. Not sure why we are deciding that we're going to charge a dollar a form for a recorder's office form. If you go to Office Depot or Staples or anywhere else like that, you get a form, you can get anything copied for 10 cents, but I believe we pay taxes that cover the budget for this office, and I don't believe that we should be charging any extra charges for any forms that are supplied by this office. If it's imperative that we do charge something, let's charge five to 10 cents a copy as they do in office supply stores. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I have no one else signed up. No one else would like to address the board, I will close the public hearing. Do you have a motion for discussion from anyone at the board?
I have a motion. Make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Hi, I believe is Carol Meyer here? Can I call her up?
Yes, sure. I'll just turn.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I just want to clarify what exactly it is that you're charging for, if they can get it somewhere else for free, what they, what is your, has your policy been in the past with documents that the public comes in to get?
Supervisor Johnson, Watson, Angus, Brotherton, Moss, we have not charged for copies of documents before. What brought this up was, we used to send everybody to Don's Office Supply because that's, they could get them for three dollars a copy. They have went out of business, and people were coming to us, so by law, we can charge a dollar per copy. If anybody comes into our office for a copy of a deed, it's a dollar per page. And we had OMB do a study, and they agreed with the dollar per copy.
Okay, are these documents that, like if, down in Bullhead City, if I want to get a copy of this, I can go on the website and download it for free?
You, we haven't put them all on yet. We do have some on there now, I think there's four of them, but we are going to add a few more, you know, if the board approves, and those will be free. If they bring it up on their computer, they can download it for free.
Is there a reason we can't have all these documents online, so people can just download them for free?
There's not any reason why we can't. Some of them are legal, would require legal explanations, so I'm sure Steve could vouch for that, that maybe they didn't need that kind of a form. We were just going to do the warranty deed, the quitclaim deed, the simple forms, the joint tenancy deeds are already on there, the affidavit of property value is already on there. So there, the simple forms we thought we would put on, but the ones where they need to go to see an attorney to have done legally is what they should do.
And is this, are these, is this something you've done before? If someone just comes off the street and wants to get something here, it's, there's already a fee, right? Since it's not, not, nothing new?
No, it's a copy. It's by statute, and we can charge a dollar per copy.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Supervisor Moss.
To clarify, it's not 10 cents a page, it's a dollar per form, so if it's a multi-page form, it's still a dollar?
No, it's a dollar per page, but most of the forms are one page.
Because the note I have here says a dollar per form fee, not a dollar per page fee.
Well, your warranty deed is one page.
Right.
And the affidavit of property value is one page, so their quitclaim deeds are one page.
So in the OMB, and that'd be the Office of Management and Budget, determines your actual costs are a dollar per form, which in reality is a dollar per page?
Right.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the copying fee for the printed documents as identified by our recorder, in light of the fact that they are free online, and there is a cost associated with producing those items, a dollar per copy would be appropriate. That's mine.
We have a second.
I second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Excuse me, item number two is a public hearing which I will open, discussion possible action, consider adoption of Mojave County Ordinance 2013-01, establishing statutory framework available to all counties through the Arizona Revised Statutes in order to ensure proper legal enforcement of federal, state, and local rules and regulations at Laughlin-Bullhead International Airport as requested by the Mojave County Airport Authority. I do have some people signed up. Ms. Barbara Pate.
Yes, my, good morning to all our new supervisors and Chairman Johnson, and this, the thing that I'm really concerned about is our safety. We need to have this enforced in all our facilities to keep the bad guys out of the, out of our, out of our situations that we've been having lately. I'm for this, I hope you consider this as a serious security issue, and our safety is important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. David Gaines.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, Brotherton, Angus, and Watson. I'm Dave Gaines, Airport Director at Laughlin-Bullhead International Airport. What the Airport Authority is doing is requesting that this ordinance be adopted in order to assist us in enforcement at the airport. For many years, we've relied upon voluntary compliance, and that's a fairly limited way to get folks to comply with good order and rule, and as things become more sophisticated in the operation of commercial service airports, Big Brother looks over our shoulder constantly, TSA, FAA, EPA, all of the alphabet organizations from the federal government, and more and more, the federal government is adjusting their enforcement to include fines and liability against not only organizations, but also the folks who are in charge and running things, i.e. myself, or other folks who may be liable for action. And in particular, of recent, the Transportation Security Administration keeps tightening the rules, and so it has become apparent that we need to have the ability to enforce our rules that has some sort of meaning, so that the public understands that there's a cost to non-compliance that jeopardizes the safety and the security of the public. So we would very much appreciate the board's adoption of this ordinance, and I'll answer any questions if there are.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Oh, Supervisor Moss.
Just to clarify, and this is for the public, but I see it in our board packet information, the TSA has issued warnings to the local airport officials regarding the lack of this ordinance?
Well, what it is, is they tell the airport that you must find ways to enforce, in particular, one of our biggest problems is parking on the front curb in front of the terminal building. Now, when you, when you assess who's ultimately at fault, what the TSA has done is they understand that I have been working diligently to try to solve some of these problems, but the liability could be the person who owns the car and leaves it unattended. Right now, there's no way to issue a citation or enforce that by the airport, so the logical thing for TSA to do is say, okay, airport, you're not solving the problem, so you're going to be liable.
And so the shorthand answer is yes, this ordinance would get the TSA off your back?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I just, just, yeah, just another point of clarification. It's because Mojave County owns this property that we must pass this ordinance in order for you to be able to enforce this.
That is correct Supervisor Brotherton.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the, um, item.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number three is discussion possible action, election of chairman and vice chairman of Mojave County Board of Supervisors. Do you have a motion for discussion on that?
Yes, I make a motion that we appoint Gary Watson as chairman and Hildy Angus as vice chairman of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, and for a term of, a period of one year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let's take a short break while we change seats. Thank you.
Good morning, Will Reed Convey. And with that, we have item number four, discussion possible action regarding the acceptance of ordinance 1991-1, amending the relating to county government administration and the duties of the county manager prohibiting interference. We have a number of people that would like to speak to that. First person would be Frederick Williams.
Sorry.
Mr. Williams?
Outside, here.
Okay, I'll put him to the rear.
Good morning Chairman Watson, Vice Chair Angus, Supervisors Moss, Brotherton, and Johnson. I think I'll have to just say supervisors. I have read through this ordinance, the original ordinance, that was passed in 91 and revised subsequently, and if I was to summarize this ordinance in one sentence, it would be, the county manager is God. And I have had problems with that, seeing what's happened in the past. I'm not going to talk about the past. What I have done is I've contacted people in two other, officials in two other counties. One is Yavapai, and I've noticed the situation with another county, Yuma. Both of them have county administrators. When I asked Yavapai for their ordinance establishing a county administrator, there was no ordinance, it was just a job position, more of a ministerial function, not a position of, where they were a CEO type. And I believe that, in my opinion, it would be a great idea to consider, if not today, down the road, to basically go to an administrative or ministerial function, not have a county manager who has unlimited, or almost unlimited powers. So I, because both of those counties are very similar in size to Mojave County, I think obviously it proves that that kind of a situation would work well. So I would encourage you that whatever the details of this ordinance involve, that perhaps either make the changes tentatively, or make some minor changes to allow the supervisors the right to speak with employees of the county without having to go through the county manager, and then look at repealing the ordinance fully. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Yeah.
Mr. Roy Hagelmeier.
I need to sign up.
It's five.
Okay. Mr. Williams.
My name is Frederick Williams. Live at 8331 West Open Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. I'm opposed to a county manager. I believe we should be more in favor of having a, an administrator. If we have a board of supervisors, we don't need a county manager. If we have a county manager, we don't need a board of supervisors. We need an administrator who is responsive to the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I believe those were all the people that were signed up to address that matter, and what would be the pleasure of the board? Need a motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
I second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried for discussion.
Chairman Watson, I somewhat agree with some of the comments that have been made today by the public, in that the county supervisor ordinance as it's currently drafted, I believe, obfuscates the authority of the board. I believe the ordinance is in need of a redraft, it is approximately 14 years old, and I believe it would be appropriate to direct staff to interact with the public and the various members of the board between now and the meeting to be conducted in February, to bring a proposed draft, revised draft for this board's consideration and for public comment. Specifically, for example, this is some of the language which I think a brief reading would indicate is somewhat objectionable. Section Roman numeral three, Appointment A, the board of supervisors shall appoint a county manager who may serve at the will of the board of supervisors. The county supervisor, county manager is not, does not, may serve at our pleasure, he does serve as our pleasure. And Roman numeral four, there's a requirement that a county manager can only be dismissed at a special meeting. I don't think that the county manager is due any consideration that a regular county employee is due, and so whether it's a regular or special meeting, I believe that he may be dismissed at. Further, the same section requires that all members of the board, a majority of all members of the board vote for dismissal. When I think, just like any other board action, it should be a quorum, a majority of a quorum of the board. Those are just a few of the objectionable language I saw in a brief review, which I believe that staff and the county attorney's office should take a look at. Another item I didn't like was in Roman numeral eight, subsection E, where it states that if a supervisor arguably violates this county ordinance by speaking, for example, to a county employee, and that's something else that needs to be clarified, is there's nothing preventing a supervisor from speaking and obtaining information from any county employee, though I think a prohibition from providing direction is appropriate. But there's a section requiring penalties to be imposed upon the supervisor, and then it references an Arizona Revised Statute, which has nothing to do with the county manager. It has to do with violating the Arizona statutes regarding the duties and conduct of the supervisors, and I think that provision should be completely eliminated. So in summary, I believe that this ordinance is in desperate need of a rewrite, and I'd be more than happy to discuss this at further lengths if anyone has any other questions of me. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Moss. We have a motion? Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, if I may ask of the county attorney, the special meeting for evaluation or dismissal or whatever of a county manager, can you tell us the reason why we've had it that way before?
I think, Mr. Chairman, board members, I think it was because the, the manager's contract contemplated that any action taken to dismiss or, or any disciplinary action against the manager should be done by the full board and should be done isolated from the rest of the board agenda. That was just the concept, there's no law that requires it to be done that way, so certainly if you want to put it on a regular agenda, there's nothing wrong with that.
And then they have the opportunity to have it in a public hearing or in, in private?
Either way, if you're doing a personnel matter and the employee requests it be held in public, it must be held in public. Otherwise, it can be done in executive session with the employee present or not.
That would be the only thing Supervisor Watson and Moss would be, that if we have a regular meeting going on, and then we have a dismissal or something to do with the manager, it can take an awful long time, so sometimes having it on a special day, you know, precludes everything else from taking place. That would be my only suggestion. I'm sure we'll take that into consideration.
May I follow up to that briefly? And thank you for that information Supervisor Johnson, that's, that's very helpful. My only point is that it may be in the interest of time to hold it at a regular meeting. It doesn't have to be at a special meeting, it could be at a special meeting, doesn't have, doesn't have to be. Whether it's a regular or special meeting should make absolutely no difference at all for scheduling purposes.
We have a motion, will I, Supervisor Moss?
Yes, I move that we direct staff concerning the public's of the comment and the board to date, and using their own professional expertise to draft after consultation with the board supervisors over the coming of the next month, a revised, a proposed revised version of ordinance 1991-1 dealing with the county manager position for review and consideration at our next regularly scheduled meeting in February.
We have a motion and a second for the county manager's ordinance 1991-1 to be revised by the next meeting in February. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item number five, discussion and possible action for the appointment of an interim acting Mojave County manager. Motion for discussion?
I make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Motion and a second for discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. We have one person that would like to speak to that item. Mr. Roy Hagelmeier. Mr. Hagelmeier, if you'll please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sure. Roy Hagelmeier, 2090 Royal Court, Mojave Valley, Arizona. Good morning Chairman Watson, Supervisors Moss, Brotherton, Angus, and Johnson. In regards to appointing an interim county manager, I would be opposed to that. I think what we need to do is let all of the individual department heads run their departments as they do now, and then we start searching for a new county manager, somebody from outside of this county that can run this county in appropriate manner. I believe if there are any major issues, that the five of you could easily handle those problems as they come up, and therefore I don't think we need to have an interim county manager running this county. But I do look forward to seeing you appoint a new county manager that can manage people and manage this county. Thanks.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to make a motion to indeed appoint an interim county manager for the period of six months. I would like to make that appointment for Mr. Mike Hendricks for the time period of six months.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, discussion? Will this be with the idea that we are going to go out for advertising for a manager position?
That would be my understanding.
And then, I mean, I guess other board members, if they're ready to vote, that's fine with me, but there hasn't been a chance for the board to sit down and interview Mike Hendricks or anybody else who might apply for that position. We haven't really opened it up, while we're putting somebody in for six months, I just didn't know if the regular board was comfortable with, we have no background or anything, resume in front of us to appoint anybody at this point, but whatever the board likes is fine with me.
Can I say something? As I understand it, each of the deputy county managers, as the structure is today, has taken a month since the last county manager had left, took his paid time off, and Mike Hendricks was one of them. As I understand this motion, it's a very short period of time to ensure the smooth operations while the board puts out a notice for a new permanent county manager, correct?
That's my understanding.
And it's for a period of six months, or is it, is that, is that a hard deadline? Is it three to six, is it just definitely six months, or is it until we find someone else?
Until we find someone else or six months. Six months would be... Six months would be the max. And then, at that time, if we didn't have a very viable candidate, at that point, we could, at that six-month period, we could then reappoint another interim period or go with the selection that we have at that time.
Can I make a comment? I'm sorry. I'll defer to Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a, are we going to do a contract, or what are we going to do with the, with Mr. Hendricks?
Well, I would prefer that would be a contract for the simple reason it would give him somewhat of a protection. I think those could be ironed out with Mr. Hendricks.
Is that something that we would want to bring back to the, I don't know if the seventh would be quick enough or not, you know, to put a contract together? It has to be a contract. Usually the contract will come from Mr. Hendricks, will submit his contract to us for our approval. I don't know what the board feels, we wanted that on the seventh, or?
I like it for it to be addressed in February meeting, so we could come back at that point.
Can you restate the motion, please? Can you restate the motion?
Yes, appoint the current Deputy County Manager, Mike Hendricks, to the appointment of the acting County Manager as interim for a six-month period. At this juncture, we will confer with Mr. Hendricks about the contract for six months. I believe that typifies my motion.
And when would this begin?
Today.
Beginning today, so what's the February, come back in February?
Contract authorization.
If I can make a question or ask a question or make some comments. First off, to address Supervisor Johnson's initial point, over the last six weeks, I believe we have had many contacts with the Deputy County Managers, and they're all intelligent, educated, and hardworking people. And I think they're all more than capable of fulfilling the job as an interim basis. On the other hand, I just got more comfortable with Deputy County Manager Hendricks, and so that's why I was so anxious to second your motion Supervisor Watson. When it comes to the idea itself, and to clarify a few points, this is only as an acting or interim basis. There's nothing saying that Supervisor, excuse me, I'm promoting him, Deputy County Manager Hendricks would become the permanent County Manager, and in fact, it's the intention, I hope, of this board to send it out on a very wide basis search so that the board itself can review multiple candidates and decide who's the best person to carry us on into the future. Now, I do have a question, is the terms of the contract, whether it's compensation, the term of time, the six months that you mentioned, is that, that's up to six months, is the way I'm interpreting your comments?
That's correct, up to six months.
Okay. And all that would be encapsulated at the February meeting. We address those details in the February meeting, but in the meantime, Deputy County Manager Hendricks would be the acting County Manager from this day forward.
That is correct.
Unless we do something different in February?
Right. Okay, we have, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried. Thank you. Item number six, motion for discussion?
I make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Motion and discussion, second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. For item number six, I have Mr. Roy Hagamire.
Good morning again, Supervisors Watson, Brotherton, Moss, Angus, and Johnson.
If you'll please state your name and address again, Mr. Hagamire, please.
Sure. Roy Hagamire, 2090 Royal Court, Mojave Valley, Arizona. In regards to the Deputy County Manager positions, these were sold to us a couple of years ago as a cost savings to this county, and obviously, most of us out here, if not all of us out here, don't believe that they are a cost saving since we've increased pay for all four of them. I think that it's time to get this county back where it's supposed to be with one person managing this county with a Board of Supervisors overseeing that manager, and they need to be eliminated. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hagamire.
Mr. Chairman, for me?
Supervisor Johnson, thank you.
I think this is something that the board will probably have to get together on, especially, some of these decisions are hard to make without having a manager in place, because when we hire a manager, depending upon the contract we sign, he will be in charge of the employees, and so he will have to have an organizational chart. I didn't vote for the four Deputy County Managers, so I'm not, you know, saying I want to keep them or not keep them, but some of these things might have to wait until we bring somebody in to see what their philosophy is on how to run things and see what the board decides to do.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson.
Can I say something? But this motion is right now to do that, and it's more of a, how I understand, is a philosophical question, whether as a county, regardless of who we bring in, if we want that high-level layer of government. So, as much as I understand what you're saying, I kind of disagree with, you know, that this is very appropriate to do today.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Moss?
I think that there's a method of addressing both Supervisor Johnson's concerns while I'm still obtaining the objection of Supervisor Angus, and that is simply for us to direct staff to bring to us in the February meeting a revised organizational chart that focuses on two issues. One, the elimination of the Deputy County Manager positions, and two, doing so with a focus on saving money. How can we reorganize to save money and then present that information for actual action at the February meeting?
Thank you. Is that in the form of a motion? Supervisor Moss?
Am I allowed to be lazy and said I say, what I just said, I want to make a motion out of it?
I'll give you that latitude today.
All right, then I make that motion.
We have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
And a second for it to be revised by staff. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried. There we move on to item number seven, discussion, possible action regarding the retention or removal of the Mojave County Building's security policies and procedures at all county buildings. Motion for discussion?
I make a motion for discussion.
I second.
Motion and second for discussion. I believe we have Mr. Fred Williams would like to address that item, please. Mr. Williams?
Morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Frederick Williams. I live at Golden Valley, 8331 West Oakman Road in Golden Valley. I hope I understand the motion. I'm in favor of removing all building security in this building, but not in other buildings where you have judges and prisoners and people who are about to be sentenced and that. I see no reason for all the security you have here, especially when you have Sheriff's Department within 100 yards of the building. If you need security here, all you post a sheriff's car outside or have a sheriff's deputy sit in the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next, we have Mr. Roy Hagamire would like to address item number seven.
Good morning again, Roy Hagamire, 2090 Royal Court, Mojave Valley, Arizona. I would agree with the last gentleman. I don't believe that the security measures are necessary in this building, but I do agree they are necessary in court buildings. I think they're a huge waste of money in this building. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hagamire. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, thank you. And what be the pleasure of the county?
Well, I have, I'll defer to the Supervisor Angus.
Thanks. I believe, to answer Mr. Williamson's question, that we are, this particular motion is just for this building, and, you know, we can go back in the history as to why those machines were put in. I know that there was lots of debate at the time. My only concern right now is that now that we have it, if we took it out, what would be the county liability on that? And I think that's something that we need to know before we make any kind of decision.
That would be a wise move.
Okay. I have a couple of questions or comments. One, I believe the comments from the public, Mr. Hagamire, Mr. Williams, about the judicial offices, the Sheriff's Department, the jails, et cetera, is well-founded. There is a concept of separation of powers which applies even to county government, and I don't believe we should be in the business of dictating as to all county buildings, primarily because the sheriff's in charge of his buildings and the judges are in charge of their buildings, and other county attorneys and all the rest of it, that also holds true. But when it comes to the speaking about this main administration building, I think we have a dual concern here, and I think Supervisor Angus referenced it. What is the liability to the county if we change the system to just completely eliminating it, is one question. And what I envision personally is not a complete elimination of the security system. In today's day and age, that would be somewhat foolhardy. But I do believe it may be more cost-effective and worthy of exploration as to whether we can confer and potentially partner with the Sheriff's Department than if we eliminated the current system after determining the value and cost associated with that, as opposed to simply having an armed deputy on premises during the working hours, you know, eight to five, Monday through Friday. And if Mr. Shehan, excuse me, Sheriff Shehan can provide that armed deputy on a full-time basis, and if it would be less expensive than the current security system in place, we're not giving up security in the building, we're just changing the type of security, and we're saving the county money, which I think is the primary responsibility, other than upholding the Constitution, of our selected officials in this day and age. So, it'd be my desire, if the chairman would entertain a motion-
Entertain a motion, be glad to.
-that we direct staff to calculate the cost of the current security apparatus, both with guards, the metal detector, and all the rest of it, and then confer with Sheriff Shehan as to the cost of maintaining an armed sheriff's deputy, and that way, if there is a cost savings, that we consider at the February meeting substituting our security measures in order to benefit the public purse.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Supervisor Moss, I don't know if you want to amend that to allow our risk management to be part of that discussion also in the County Attorney's Office. I believe there's, and I don't know if we want to get into it today, maybe the February meeting would be the best, but I think there's a higher propensity for armed attacks in government buildings than there are in other buildings, too, so that's one thing we need to take into consideration, maybe with risk management and the attorney sitting there also, it might-
And Supervisor Johnson, thank you for that comment, and I will amend my motion to essentially restate what I originally said, in addition to directing staff to confer with the County Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, and risk management, so they can bring all these variables to our attention in the February meeting.
Thank you for your motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, the discussion, possible action, allowing weapons in or on the county facilities and vehicles by citizens and county employees. Motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
I'll second. Motion and second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I put this on, I don't know if this would be something better continued over until the February meeting to decide what we're going to do with security, and then it gives people a chance to think it over until then if that, if somebody wants-
We had one person that would like to speak to it, but-
Sure.
Mr. Hagamire, would you like to speak to this item?
Good morning again, Roy Hagamire, 2090 Royal Court, Mojave Valley, Arizona. I would agree with Supervisor Johnson on this, it becomes a moot point if we don't eliminate the security system. But with that said, a well-armed society is a safe society. We never had problems when we carried guns in this building before, and I don't think we'll see problems if we do it again. There's nobody going to come in here shooting the place up if you have 40 people in here with guns on their sides.
Thank you, Mr. Hagamire.
May I make a moment?
Supervisor Moss?
I'm very pleased that Supervisor Johnson placed this item on the agenda. In my view, it's something that's actually somewhat independent in some circumstances of the security system. When it comes to the current security, of course, the metal detector would go off if anyone walked in with a pistol, and so if we allowed the armed public to come in, the metal detector would be going off constantly. If we change the system to where it's, we coordinate more and partner more with the Sheriff's Department, I don't necessarily see that metal detectors being part of the security apparatus, and so having a BP machine is not really an issue. But I think the philosophy that I have here on this particular point is staff and citizens do have a Second Amendment right, and they do have a right in the Arizona Constitution to make provisions for their own protection. We don't necessarily, we should not necessarily be dictating to them that they have to be dependent upon the Sheriff's Office or the private security to provide for their own protection. And I would like to see a revisit of this policy where citizens and staff, under certain conditions, are allowed to carry weapons into the building. And I would distinguish between employees and staff, or citizens and employees, for example. I don't think we really should put any conditions except what's under the current existing law on citizens. They're still citizens, whether they're on the sidewalk out there or inside the building here. And as to staff, on the other hand, since there are employees and we are more responsible for them, I believe would be advisable to have the County Attorney's Office and staff come together as to setting out guidelines and when and where our employees might carry a weapon if they so desire, because I don't want to take their right of self-protection away from them, whether they're driving on I-40 in a truck or whether they're in this building.
Thank you, Supervisor Moss. Is that in the form of a motion?
Well, I will restate it this way, because I don't believe, what's the old saying my grandmother once said, is you measure twice and cut once. So, I believe that it would be appropriate to direct staff, the County Attorney's Office, and risk management to evaluate a policy and present a policy for this board's consideration in the February meeting, which would allow staff and employees to carry weapons and certain, provided certain conditions are met, and I won't prejudge those conditions, and to allow citizens who are law-abiding and who meet the requirements of Arizona law to carry a weapon into this building anytime they please, but no other county buildings.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Moss?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Angus. Thank you. Any further question? Any further question? Statement? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, for the discussion, possible action of the retention or removal of the Mojave County Dress Code. Motion for discussion?
I move to discuss.
I second.
Motion and second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? We shall discuss. Item number nine, we have Mr. Fred Williams again. Mr. Williams?
I'm getting too old to be running back and forth like that. Morning. Chairman Watson, Supervisor Moss, Brotherton, Angus, and Johnson. My name is Frederick D. Williams. I live at 8331 West Oatman Road, Golden Valley. I have been opposed to this dress code from the very beginning. There's nothing in the Arizona Revised Statutes on the Open Meeting Law or in Chapter Seven and Chapter Eleven of the handbook that allows any form of dress code. How it came about in the beginning, I don't know. It says in the Chapter Seven and Chapter Eleven of the handbook that any interpretation of the Arizona Open Meeting Law will be in favor of an open reading. And there'll be no restrictions against anyone coming in. I was told if I wanted to wear my hat in the building, for which I had a doctor's prescription, which met the dress code, I would have to sit outside and watch it on television. That would be humiliating to me and discriminating. I wouldn't be allowed to sit in here with my friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
No questions?
Thank you. Mr. Hagemeyer?
Good morning, one more time. Roy Hagemeyer, 2090 Royal Court, Mojave Valley, Arizona. I agree. I am opposed with this dress code. This dress code is a violation not only of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, it's also a violation of the United States Constitution. We have every right to come in this meeting dressed the way that we please and not the way that a county manager pleases. This dress code needs to be eliminated, and it needs to be eliminated today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagemeyer. Next, we have Mr. Canelas. Jim Canelas?
Good morning. And thank you for letting me speak.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Jim Canelas. I live at 4402 Oatman Road, Central Sacramento Valley. Remove this offensive item, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canelas. Supervisor Angus, you look anxious.
Yeah, I've been talking about this for a long time. You know, there's... When we got the background material for this item, it was given the dress code, and I read it through and through, and I looked for the item that has been a source of contention for a long time. And that is the... You're not allowed to wear any flag or a hat with a flag or anything like that. And surprisingly enough, it is not written anywhere in the rules. The only place it rears its ugly head is under the Mojave County Board of Supervisors Rules of Order, no deadly dangerous weapons, yada, yada, yada. Also, no flag, signs, placards are permitted in the building. That's it. So somehow, that got twisted and turned into not being able... Allowed to wear flags, no matter, you know, in what context, as my friend Michelle is wearing out there. It's a perfectly lovely shirt. And so that started sort of this thing. And I propose that... And looking at the actual rules, you know, this is Mojave County. I honestly, personally, I don't care what you wear, what you... As long as, you know, you sit... You do the other rules of order here. Some of these, like not being able to wear a miniskirt. I mean, it's 130 degrees in the summer. Shorts, things like that. So, I'd like to propose that we sort of get rid of sort of all the restrictions, except sort of the normal rules of business. I'll defer to Supervisor Moss, maybe, for a little legal clarification about that.
I'm not here to give legal advice. We've got to look at that guy over there.
That'll never happen again.
I will make a comment in my supervisor role capacity, though.
Supervisor Moss.
Okay. I agree with you, Hildy, that I think this dress code has been twisted. And anything that can be twisted once can be twisted again. And so it's a good idea if we simply eliminate it. I would propose... And I'm not saying this in the form of a motion. I'm going to... I'm tired of talking on this stuff, so I'll let you do it. But I think the "also" line on page four of eleven of our Rules of Order, also no flag, signs, placards are permitted in the building, should be deleted. I think they're the public, and if they want to hold up a sign out there saying, Supervisor Moss, you're terrible, I mean, I'll tolerate it. And so it's... And when it comes to the dress code itself, I think we should be looking at something that's either more the merchant standard, which is no shoes, no shirt, no service. If you want to wear a muscle shirt or a skirt or shorts, I don't care. If you want to wear a hat, fine. I mean, I was taught to take my hat off when I walked in the building, but if you don't want to do that for any reason you care, that's up to you. You know, different strokes for different folks. So, I would be perfectly happy with a dress code that says persons shall not violate the public indecency statutes. Don't show up naked. That, that's fine with me.
I'd like to make a comment.
Certainly.
Okay. I just... I have all the confidence in the citizens of Mojave County to know that they're going to come to these meetings dressed appropriately and not be inappropriate in any way. I just believe that everyone here will abide by those standards.
Thank you, Supervisor Brotherton. Did you have something you would like to add to that?
Me?
Supervisor Angus.
Oh, no, I think it's all been said.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion?
Okay, I guess I'll do it. I move that we hold in abeyance the current enforcement of the dress code until such time as we consider it at the February meeting. And that held in abeyance the enforcement of the dress code, which means that no one can be prosecuted for violating it until the February meeting, where staff will bring to us, considering both the public and the supervisory comments made today, a revised dress code, which I anticipate would be much, much shorter.
Thank you for your motion. We have a second.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. I'll move on to item number 10. It's a discussion, possible action regarding the institution of a call to the public after each of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Motion for discussion?
I move to discuss.
Motion to discuss?
I second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We shall discuss. Item number 10. We have Mr. Jim Canelas would like to address that. Mr. Canelas?
Thank you. My name is Jim Canelas. I live at 4402 Oatman Highway, Central Sacramento Valley. Please allow us our First Amendment rights to speak on any subject at these meetings. That's what I would hope you'll do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canelas. Mark Shaver?
My name is Mark Shaver. Forty... Forty fifty-four West Hiller Drive, Meview. It's been a long time coming for this agenda, this particular part here. And under Arizona Statute 38-431.01, Section H, if there's any confusion about this, I would like to know or hear you discuss it as far as the board being able to respond to questions or to comments made during or after a call to the public. There's been quite a bit of debate on whether or not you'd be able to respond in any manner. But under Section H, it says here, "Individual members of the public body," you, "may respond to criticism made by those who have dressed the public body." "May ask staff to review the matter or may ask that the matter be put on the future agenda." To me, those are responses to anything that anyone brought up during that call. Anyways, it's been a long time coming. I've talked to most of you, a great deal, except for Buster Johnson, about this, and in some cases, have it on video. So I don't expect your response to change now. Thank you.
Next, we have Roy Hagemeyer.
Good morning, one more time. Roy Hagemeyer, 2090 Royal Court, Mojave Valley, Arizona. These meetings are held for the public. And if, for any reason, this public elected body decides that they want to squelch the public and keep them from talking, that's a violation of all of our rights. And I believe that a call to the public is very appropriate for this meeting. It is... It's held in almost every other public meeting, city councils and Board of Supervisors meetings. Matter of fact, this is the only county that doesn't have a call to the public at their Board of Supervisors meetings in the state of Arizona. So I would ask that you put a call to the public on the agenda for every one of these Board of Supervisors meetings, and preferably put it at the beginning of the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hagemeyer. Mr. Williams? Fred Williams?
Morning, Chairman Watson, Supervisor Moss, Brotherton, Angus, and Johnson. My name is Frederick D. Williams. I live at 8331 West Oatman Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. For... We have not had a call to the public for too long. There's too many items that a lot of people would like to bring up that the former county manager would not allow anyone to talk about unless it was on the agenda. I think we do need a public open forum. It was said that it was stopped because it got too riotous and couldn't be controlled. Well, ladies and gentlemen, you have the Sheriff's Department to control any of the public here that gets noisy and rambunctious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next, we have Mr. Steve Robinson.
I am Steve Robinson, 3439 North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. Chairman Watson, Vice Chair Angus, Supervisors. This is an exciting situation to see this on the agenda. Thank you, Chairman... Supervisor Johnson, for putting it on the agenda. The purpose under the Open Meeting Law is to allow people, folk, to speak to the non-agendized items that haven't been addressed by the Board of Supervisors. The purpose is to give people a chance in this forum to say, here is a problem that you have not dealt with at the county level. And so therefore, that is the function and the purpose of it, not to discuss non-agendized or agendized items, which have a chance to be addressed on each of those items. Having said that, the suggestion to put it at the end of the meeting is almost disrespectful to the public, forcing them to go through a whole meeting if all they have is one thing they would like to say to you, which is, this is a problem. Could you please address it? Whether it's a criticism or whether it's something that needs to be looked at. That is the purpose of the call to the public. The City of Kingman had it at the end of the meeting for some time, I had heard. Well, some time ago, they have begun putting it at the beginning of the meeting. That is where it belongs, to give the people a chance to speak up front. That way, if they do have to get on with the rest of their day, they can leave the meeting because they've had a chance to voice their opinion. So if... When you make your motion, I would strongly encourage you to make the motion to put it at the beginning of the meeting before the consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Butch Meriwether.
Good morning. I'm Butch Meriwether. I live at 2225 South Dome Road, Golden Valley. Chairman Watson, Supervisors Moss, Brotherton, Angus, and Johnson. I encourage that you do start a call to the public, but I would request that it be moved to the front of the meeting. That way, it's not a convenience to the people who are showing up that just maybe want to say thank you and you're doing a great job, or if they have a suggestion about something that's not on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meriwether.
Pleasure of the board.
Okay. I do agree with the last several speakers that the call to public should be at the beginning of the meeting. The call to public is for the convenience of the public. So if the public knows it's going to be the set time at the beginning of the meeting, sometime between 9:30 and 10:00, if they're coming from long distances or they can plan their day, they'll know exactly when they're going to be able to say their... What they have to say. So I make a motion to institute the call to public before each Board of Supervisor meeting.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion by the board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
I consider this to be a business meeting. We're here to conduct business. And people have brought up the fact that we do have items on the agenda that are... That can be addressed by the public. We have never had call to the public, no matter what has been said in the paper over and over in the sixteen years I've been here or in the... Anytime prior to that. So it's never taken away from anybody. I believe with the telephone we have now, the cell phones we have, we have US mail, we have email, we have tweets, we have Facebook. We have... We're invited to lunches, breakfasts, dinners, the rotaries, the quannas. We're at every place. If somebody has a problem with... That they need to address, they can have... They have many ways to address them, not by coming to a board meeting when we have things that we need to take care of at the board meeting. And I believe that if we've... If supervisors feel they need more time with their people, then... I think I saw something in the paper about town halls from Supervisor Angus. It is a good thing to do, to get out and see the people. But, you know, I don't believe that a call to the public does anything to facilitate our board meetings.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Angus.
Okay. I believe it is your right as a US citizen, as an American, to address your government body in an open forum, on tape, on video. And so I am saying again, I'd like to make this motion.
We have a motion? I believe we have a second, don't we?
Yes.
Your second?
Joy seconded.
Supervisor Brotherton?
I have a comment I'd like to make.
Certainly, Supervisor.
On this discussion. I think it dovetails on to Supervisor Angus's last statement. If a... One of my constituent talks to me at the rotary meeting or at some function or on the soccer field, yeah, they have that right. And I'll talk to anybody who wants to talk to me about anything, whether it's on the telephone or otherwise. But if a citizen wants to address the Board of Supervisors as a whole, because I'm not the government, I'm just a small fraction of it. If the citizen wants to address the government as a whole, you know, the old phrase, saying in the First Amendment, petition your government for redress of grievances, they have to come here and talk to all of us, not just one of us. So that's another reason I favor this motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Moss. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? There being none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Yeah, motion is carried. Item number eleven, discussion, possible action regarding the hiring of new medical examiner. We have, uh, motion for discussion?
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried for discussion. Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I place this on the agenda, we've been given notice by the medical examiner that, uh, they plan to end their contract with us, and so, bring it to the Board so they can decide if we're going to go out for advertising, or what the pleasure of the Board might be, or just at least get on their radar so we could continue over to the next meeting.
When we did our tour of the county, we did visit the medical examiner's office, and, were surprised by some of the things we found. I had been told, uh, like Supervisor Johnson said, that the, uh, medical examiner wished to terminate her contract. Right now, the county pays her a certain amount, and she's responsible for everything, renting the building, the equipment, everything. It's a contract. And, um, I was to, I was under the impression that, that there was nothing that she can do, she was out, she wanted to go, but after I met her and spoke to her, that really isn't the case. There's other things, so, um, again, I'd like to go back to staff to speak to this medical examiner. As far as I can tell, there's no other issues besides her willingness or not willingness to carry on that position. So if we could, uh, discuss with her further what it might take for her to stay, I, I think that would be the, uh, the first start.
Okay, and that's to refer back to staff?
Yeah.
Motion is to refer to staff?
I'll second.
We have a second? Further discussion?
Yes, I do have a comment. During, during this tour that we had, it was like, it was actually very valuable, we got to meet a lot of people and see a lot of buildings I never knew existed, and find out about pros and cons that weren't really on my radar, and this was one of them. I have a concern that, what, and I understand of the contract with the medical examiner, it's actually fairly beneficial to the county, and if she leaves, um, then we may have to find someone else who'll take it on a contract basis, or even take it within the county, which I think would be very expensive if it actually became a government job, um, in a government building with government employees. So I really do think it would, um, behoove us to, um, have staff to speak with the medical examiner, and determine what, if anything, might be done to keep her under her current contract with some minor variations which might alleviate some of her problems.
Thank you Supervisor Moss. Supervisor Brotherton?
Yes, I was under the impression that mostly, when I talked with the doctor, uh, when we were on tour, it was actually the facility that she was more displeased with than anything. She didn't have air conditioning in the area where she did autopsy's, and this is in Havasu, and in the middle of the summertime, I can imagine that it would be, um, terrible there. So I think that, um, this seemed to be the only thing that she was, she didn't indicate that she wanted to terminate her contract, or terminate her services to Mojave County, but she did want to have a better facility.
Thank you Supervisor Brotherton.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Do we have, do we have from the, the county, the letter that we received from? Medical examiner? And for Supervisor Brotherton, the facility in, in Lake Havasu is paid for by the coroner, they, they find their own facilities, so the idea of air conditioning was-
She inherited that.
Something she should have looked at to begin with.
I believe she inherited that building.
Yeah, she inherited that from the last medical examiner.
Thank you Ms. Laura.
Good morning Supervisors. We are in receipt of a letter from Dr. Worrell informing us of her desire to retire. There are a couple of issues, one being the air conditioning in the building that she is currently leasing, another is that she has no medical insurance. She does, she, she would like to be a county employee, and she would like for her employees also to have benefits. So there are a couple of issues. She has committed to us, however, that she will not leave us hanging in the event that we do have to go out for a contract, that she will stay with us until that time, although she really would like to stay with us provided we could meet some of the terms and conditions that she, that she needs. One of them, of course, being the air conditioning.
Thank you Ms. Laura. Any questions for Ms. Laura? Thank you. Any further discussion?
Um, so if I can translate what the, the staff just told us, um, I forget her name, I apologize.
Ms. Laura.
Ms. Laura, Ms. Laura, um, is that we really need to direct our staff to make a, to engage with our current medical examiner, and see what needs to be done with her contract in order to keep that service in place, so.
Okay, we have a motion to refer back to staff, and we have a section. Uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried, referred to staff. Item number twelve, discussion, possible action regarding the, uh, freeze the public information officer position, effective January twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, for the balance of fiscal year thirteen into direct staff to evaluate the need for the position moving forward. Motion for discussion? So may.
Is it necessary to freeze that position? I mean, I-
Can we have a second for discussion?
I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second for discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We shall discuss.
Is it necessary to freeze that position for the entire year of two thousand and thirteen?
No.
Okay, well, I think that there might be, uh, you know, uh, an opportunity to have a person serve, uh, in this capacity more or less, as just a liaison between, um, maybe the Supervisors and, and the media. Certainly, as far as I am concerned, my door is always open, I'll talk to the media anytime. Anyone. I'll talk to anyone anytime, but I don't know that we need to freeze that position for the entire year. I, I don't know, I just thought I would ask that question, do we really need to do that?
No, it's not absolutely necessary, in my point of view.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
The, the year would just be till June thirtieth, just for the rest of this fiscal year, so that is, and then if we had the, and my idea was having staff come back and evaluate it, that's what the Board had the pleasure of saying, "Do we actually need a public information officer, or don't we need one?" That was just my suggestion, whatever the Board wants to do is fine with me.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson.
So to, um, so just so, I'm new to this, so I'll ask some questions.
Supervisor Moss?
It's, uh, you're not considering Supervisor Johnson getting rid of the PIO position, just to basically give us a timeout, do a reevaluation period, and decide where to go from there?
Right, it's up to the, if the Board decides they might need two people, I don't know, but, or they, or they need none, but.
I, I think that, I think this goes with, uh, the other issues that we're sending to staff as far as the Deputy County Magis, it's all it's doing with the restructure, this will be part of it. You know, personally, I come from a marketing, uh, background, and I, I believe personally that PIOs are important, um, it's just where they, who they report to, I think we had a problem with this PIO, with who he reported to. So, um, as, just as far as making sure that there is a, a point where, where the press and the citizens can come and get the right information quickly, I think it's important, I just wanted that on record, but I think that's all part of the structure change that, that we proposed earlier.
So, um, when it comes to what Supervisor Johnson suggested, and what you're suggesting, is that maybe we should consider this as part of the reorganizational scheme that we're going to consider in February, and whether we decide to fill it, assign a different job duties, a different salary structure, or not doing anything with it at all, we can evaluate in February. Would that be right, Supervisor Angus?
Yes, correct.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
The motion is to, um, refer it back to staff, um, to working with their restructuring of, uh, the county administration.
In the meantime, though, we're not going to go out to fill the position.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, not going to fill the position right now.
Okay, we have a motion?
Did, Hildy, were you making the motion?
I made the motion.
She made the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
We had some.
I'm sorry, yes you did. Please, come down.
My name is Stephen Robinson, live at thirty-four thirty-nine North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. Chairman Watson, Vice Chair Angus, Supervisors. In looking through the job descriptions for these positions, there is no official by name, Public Information Officer. What there is, is a position called Public Information Director, which is a non-classified, thus not subject to the merit rules, allegedly subject to Rule five-oh-two political activity, with a very high pay scale, seventy-five to ninety thousand. Then there's a Public Information Specialist with, with a much lower scale, like, I assume it's right around forty to fifty thousand dollar pay scale. That position is subject to the merit rules, merit system rules, and thus subject to dealing with, you know, violations of those rules, and through the process of analyzing whether that's happened. On the issue of my suggestions how to deal with this, I would suggest that it is a good function, if we have a goal, of promoting more transparency, to have someone who would be, who would be a liaison to facilitate, arrange, and coordinate meetings or interviews by either the press, or whom, you know, the newspapers with department heads. I think that is a really good function of a Public Information Officer, is to give them a opportunity to help coordinate and thus promote greater government transparency here at Mojave County. And thus, to help even create a system where there's, citizens could put into a, a suggestion box, for instance, not one that just goes into a circular file, but where the citizens could have, you know, an opportunity to present suggestions that get to the Board without having to address it here, even at a call to the Public. So that's what I would suggest. As far as the merit system rules, obviously, I was subject to activity by the former PIO, where he passed out information about me on county time and property. I feel like that was an-
Mr. Robinson, if you'll get to the point, please, uh, not go back to the history of what happened before.
All my point is, that's why we need to, that's why we need to have a very restrictive position, a Public Information Specialist, not a Director, and that's all I'm trying to say, is we need someone that's accountable, not above the law. That's my only point on that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Roy Hagemeyer?
Good morning Board of Supervisors, uh, Roy Hagemeyer, twenty-ninety Royal Court, Mojave Valley, Arizona, and I promise this is the last time I'll be up here. The Public Information Officer, or as the President of the United States calls it, the Press Secretary, tend to say what they're told to say. They really serve no purpose other than the fact they're a mouthpiece for somebody. I do not believe that Mojave County has enough information on a regular basis to have a PIO. I believe that the Supervisors can address any issues that this county is going through, and the county manager can address issues that are of, uh, the utmost importance, excuse me, utmost importance, that needs to be given to the Public on a urgent basis. So therefore, I would say that we need to eliminate this position and save the county seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars a year. The question that I have is, are there any financial or legal issues that would prohibit you from eliminating that position today? If not, I would say today's the day to get rid of them. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hagemeyer. Okay, any further discussion by the members of the Board? We have a motion to, uh, refer this item back to staff, for recommendations, bring back at the next meeting. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion is carried. Item number thirteen, the discussion, possible action for the approval of the appointment of Michael Gordon to the Planning and Zoning Commission, representing Supervisory District Three, contingent upon the successful background check. That term is to expire January two, two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Chairman, to make a motion for approval? We have a motion for approval.
A second?
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number fourteen. Discussion, possible action regarding the, uh, appointment, approve the clerk of the Board of Supervisors' job description, and approve the appointment of Ms. Peggy Prince as Clerk of the Board, Range twenty, Step Four, effective January two, two thousand and thirteen. Motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
A second?
And we have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried, we shall discuss.
Um, we've worked with Ms. Prince since, uh, we became elected, she was up, been our liaison and giving us information, I found her, um, absolutely professional, and have absolutely, um, no problem in, um, her appointment to be the permanent Clerk of the Board.
Thank you Ms. Angus, is that in the form of a motion?
Anyone else want to say anything?
I have a comment.
I have, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I've had, been able to work with Ms. Prince and have no problem there, but there has been people that have put in for this, you know, for the position, just want to make people aware that we're going without, you know, having any kind of formal application, um, process to go through, so.
Thank you Ms. Johnson. Supervisor Brotherton? Supervisor Brotherton? I'm sorry.
Uh, my working with Mrs. Prince has been absolutely just of pleasure, she's been so helpful, and me being a newbie, I had many, many questions, she's been very gracious in helping and answering those questions, so I think she would make a fine Clerk of the Board.
Thank you Supervisor.
I have a question, um, this is to Bill Ekstrom, actually. Um, is there any prohibition from us to appointing a Clerk of the Board today without going through an interview or application process?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, no, there is none. No, this is appointment by our, by the Board. And as a matter of fact, I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, job description, and also the appointment of Ms. Peggy Prince to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors for Mojave County, at Range twenty, Step Four, effective January two, two thousand and thirteen.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. Item number fifteen, discussion, possible action regarding the approval of the general fund contingency transfer, and we better hear from, uh, John Timko on that if we could. Motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, I mean, it's, we have to have the, the funds, it's divided in half, and I don't really need to hear from Mr. Timko to tell me that.
We have a motion for Supervisor Johnson, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the transfer of the contingency fund for the, uh, new Supervisory District. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Can I ask?
I'm sorry.
I need to clarify, because I am new at reading these budgets and all the rest of that. I'm going to ask for District Five, which is my district, two-point-zero FTE, which I assume means two full-time employees, um, but in reality, that's one full-time employee and two part-time employees. My question, and maybe we do have to hear from Mr. Timko on this, I'm not sure, or maybe Mr. Johnson can clarify for me, I'm not, I'm not proud, I'll take information from wherever I can get it, um, is that, that's just budget capacity, not a limitation as to who, who and how many I can hire, that's just my limit on the dollar amount I can spend. Is that correct?
The key to your budget, this is something you'll need to remember when doing with Mr. Timko. That once you put something in the employee section, you can't move it anywhere else. So you can't have excess in the employee section, or you can have, you can move money from somewhere else in, so you're fine, but you don't want to have too much money there because then he won't let you move it out.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Would you like clarification from Mr. Timko?
Yeah, I think I probably would, just to make sure I'm not stepping on my own shoelaces.
Okay, Mr. Timko?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, I would just point out the word, the letters FTE stand for Full Time Equivalent, and so your, your understanding of two half-time equal one full-time is correct.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Timko. Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second for the approval. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. Item number 16, Supervisor Johnson, discussion and possible action, the appointment of members of Mojave County Board of Supervisors to Regional State Mojave Board.
Mr. Chairman, I put this on the agenda, we have some duties coming up, especially with the County Supervisor Association and the Legislative Policy Committee, which you sit on now, I know they've got some items that need to be addressed. We have 15 boards, I don't know how the Board wants, how they, what's the pleasure to assign people to it.
Okay, I'll start off with a motion for discussion.
I move for discussion.
A second.
Motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Possibly the, the way we could proceed on this is just to ask each of our Board members which ones they would prefer to work on. Would that be appropriate?
That's fine with me.
Okay, I'll start with you Supervisor Johnson. Any of the boards that you would prefer to work on?
The only one I, I sit is the Chair of the Quad State Coalition, other than that, I'm fine with whatever I'm doing.
Okay. Can we start with this position then, and we get a consensus?
Sure.
Okay, everyone fine with Mr. Jon, Supervisor Johnson serving on the Quad State Government Coalition?
I move that Supervisor Johnson continues to serve on the Quad State County Government Coalition.
Great. We have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, thank you Supervisor Johnson. From there, let's go back up to number one. Mojave County Board of Health, do we have a Supervisor interested in?
I, you know, Chairman Watson, I think I need a-
Supervisor Bretherton.
I think I need a little more time, really. I, it's been just a whirlwind, and I have really not had time to sit down and, and see what all of these boards are, and what they do, and what the purpose is, et cetera. I would really like to do, I would like to know a little more about these before I make some choices, if that would, if that is permissible.
I think that would probably be fine, there are a couple appointments we do need to make today, and then we could probably go back, study these positions, and then make those recommendations in February.
I'd like to, um-
At our next, our next meeting on the 7th.
The 7th.
But there is one that we probably should make today, and that is the Mojave County, I'm sorry, the County Supervisors Association Legislative Policy Committee Representative.
You, you, that's the one you-
You're on that, aren't you?
I have sat on it before.
Do you want to keep sitting on it?
That'd be fine.
Is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay. You got it.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Are there-
If, if I could, Chairman, I'm really interested in serving on Mojave County Water Authority, that's something that's always really interested me, and I'd like to, since I'm no longer going to be practicing law as frequently as I would like, I would like to do that, Board, if I may.
Okay, Supervisor Moss indicating a willingness to serve on the Mojave County Water Authority, I'd like to make that motion.
A second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you Supervisor Moss. Are there any other?
Yeah, I, I do think it's a good idea, we're going to meet, be meeting here next Monday, and maybe we can have that time, we can look at it and, and get the acquaintance, like, just, just off the top of my head, six and seven, there, those are two different WACOG Mojave County Advisory Council and the Executive Board are two completely separate.
Those are two separate.
Okay, it's that kind of thing, we just want to look into it.
Okay, but generally, the person that sits on WACOG does-
Sits in both, okay. Well, I'm, that's the one I'm probably going to want.
Well, thank you, that's great. All right.
Should we, if we, is there anyone has a burning desire to be on the WACOG boards, otherwise can we just take care of that now?
Okay, I'll be on the WACOG boards.
Okay, on both.
I move that Supervisor Angus serve on both WACOG boards, both the WACOG Mojave County Advisory Council and the WACOG Executive Board.
I'll second the motion.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Are there any other committees in which we might feel it important to do today?
Well, we should put Supervisor Bretherton on something, she's kind of left out here. Always turn it down next time.
She's probably going to end up with about six on the likely. All right, I believe that concludes our agenda. Is that correct?